To start.
I have states. To the public, the voice is yours. One nation under God, indivisible, whether it be in justice or law.
Very well. Here.
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 Are there any conflicts of interest to be cleared? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So, second.
Is motion in the second on any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Inter motion, approve the minute.
Second.
There's motion and a second to approve the minutes, if there any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any visitors to be heard or not on the agenda? Then Rod, got a right of way application from today evening election. This was one that came after.
Yeah. The guys, there is a checklist. I didn't remember if I, yeah, there's some. Everything, so it's good to know, like, as far as I'm concerned.
Motion approve the application, second.
It is a motion and a second to approve right of way application. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then Rod, do you have an update on this new residence distance?
Yeah, we're up on the Jefferson River, 309th Street west of University on the Ridge over the, the Miami River, we met with FEMA and NRCS out there a couple weeks ago. FEMA's gonna help us out on fixing back walls and the slope on the west side, but W so far, I don't remember if it was Brad. Pretty hard, this, need a guy out of the Miami, TLC.
Yeah.
So they, they got into contact with NRCS and we invited them to a meeting and the slope is out in the herd, right away on the southwest side, we need to do more that way and towards the Baptist Creek side, right, and so what FEMA won't cover, NRCS is gonna try to help out, so they required this weather. I had Grant from Alte fill out the, they had kind of a generic one, he filled in all the details and I sent it off to that Tony and he said everything looks good, move your touch, so there is a, I don't know how much money we have, but there is a little help was there, so I brought up down here at Dakota Street and Dawson Street, but they can't, they don't do anything where Federal Highway is involved. So, and that's E R, I think a bit of FEMA thing that they could help there too, but that one, they can't help. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. I have one other. I don't know of money going in here, but did you see that Title VI, have you ever?
I, I did, I can't say I've ever heard of it, but I didn't get a chance to look at it.
Before I start, somebody fills in, just a pre-award assurance checklist the Department of Transportation has now, and I'll send a copy, I don't remember if I sent you a copy, it's, it's, we talked about it next meeting, whatever. I do have an update where three new people, two is they, two was CDLs, one was out. Centerville, Van Lee and Jefferson. All seen. First impression, I think they'll do fine. So, out of 22 applicants, we only got four that was worth interviewing. Come on forward again, Louisiana, I don't know. So, but no, I sent you, as you know, this morning. Aaron Avery, he's a vet. Walter Avery and Adam in Florida, Andrew, four two from Jefferson. Two of them are ready to start next Tuesday, though I have to wait here, give two weeks notice, if you want to do so, I appreciate that, I assume they did that for you to make in late quick, so. We're getting there.
That puts back to Fulham.
Right now, so, so he gets a form and then I'm going. And just so you know, we opened up the form and job in-house with Asia, so we'll put out an application in July 20th to fill out an application in the role, but so far two, so we'll see how that goes. That's all I have.
Sounds like progress.
I hope so.
Thank you. Jim Peterson.
Martin, congratulations on your reelection. Thank you. Short timers, right?
We officially lame ducks.
Yeah, now you voted last week for our campaign, so thank you for that. And on 11/19, we'd like to invite all of you, we're gonna have the first harvest festival at LC, you may have gotten an invitation, or you will, in five to seven, some people leave early because that's not gonna be, you know, volleyball, but we just wanna sell, celebrate and keep awareness of, with A with Hutton. With that on before today, there's been a couple emails, I'm just gonna buy a bit, just to check in on the status of these co-op, because I talked to Merle about a week ago, if you go back a little history on 8/23, that you give some pricing on your off-on ramps, 8/28, there was some correspondence, Sophie did a follow-up on about April 18, Merle responded last week, I think some of you were on the email, true, street guys are on that, I'm just here to say, who is the lead, so we keep the correspondence back and forth, because they do have some questions now, and I can help, but it's whoever you want me to, or I could step away. I do have, when I spoke with Merle last, we coordinated a meeting to talk to more than dealer to see if the TIP could apply to this project, to work that, and we've got two folks in when we did TIP education, so depending on funding for those brands, wherever that is, that may apply, but that's for the folks that sound, I'm just here to see from your position, what, where we are, who's the leader, what role do you want economic development to help with.
So Travis, maybe you probably know more about this than anyone else.
And that's fine, I can be the lead and just stay in contact, but I think we wanna keep Jim.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Or maybe we just keep that in there every three weeks, you know, these guys have knowledge, I don't know, at least it's in our four funds, so it's outside our pot.
So, make sure we get Bren's email, because Bren's gonna be the superintendent.
Okay, congrats.
So we're just gonna work, right back, we talked, we just wanna go through Bren.
Yep, we in the background, our lead, me, is Al.
Yeah.
So.
I've got Bren's.
Last time I talked to him, they're waiting for DOT to give them pricing, and DOT says, you give them pricing, and even know back and forth, and so Adam, from Alte is the design on the thing, so.
So they're following up on some of those questions, and that, so that the provisional or preliminary estimate from the state, did those make it through outside, because it sounded a little bit like that's what Adam was maybe asking for.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, that's kind of what I took from the last round of emails, that he hadn't received anything.
Since you poured that onto him?
I don't, I didn't get it either.
Okay.
I, they.
And what he's done here, or I haven't really seen it, because I thought, I thought Alte sent it, but.
Did you get a cost for the treasury money?
From Alte, no, others were coming, no, from the DOT.
From the DOT.
There was two Adams, Adam Shone here.
Because I, I sent that email to try to, just to articulate a little bit, what, you know, what I was seeing in the emails, but it was not necessarily everybody was on every email, so, but that, that seemed like that might have been the breakdown, so let's make sure if that hasn't happened yet, then let's make sure that that, from Adam Shone here goes to Adam at all.
And that's why I was.
Add the DOT that.
Hey, person, I got left out of the loop too, and I, I think Alte sent me something, otherwise I missed out on, some of them, I don't know what their problem is, so.
I just look at you and see. That's Sophie said, something, so we're just, no, maybe make sure we have the writing, I'll write people's status.
And then just an update on, in case everybody hasn't seen Merle's last update, said they removed the structures that the mech, some mechling site except the office shop, they find a heap, by the end of the month, they'll have 3,000 tons of crushed concrete moved to the mechling site, the restructure, reevaluating design, how they want the grain received and storage be laid out, probably go properly on it, store, something like this, others. And like to start doing some dirt work prior to winter, but I think they want to talk to more than dealer to see if that does, or you would be considered for a, et cetera. And then Merle's question, we're all, we're, whose response will Costa, her lines? When would it start? I didn't have bids paid in the roll, so I do think it's probably a call of all parties, so. But who would we like, I can't facilitate with Sophie and then just, like I, you, of course. Bren, Bren?
I can, we'll send it to you.
Okay. That's all we do, get it set up, thanks very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Scott. We got the, we have the certificate.
Yeah. Looking at equipment for our LEC, and so specifically, there's a lot of storm roll equipment. Look at the blueprints out there, and ultimately, we're only out, maybe, which might be most pieces out there. So I live on the dual cat, made by Bobcat. You know, it has a lot of diversity, like there's skis here, doesn't need, but it needs, I think, for half, and there's just sound on it, so. So, and you're a little more user friendly, especially for self-bound, you got a lot more visibility around, you need to get inside the cat, the Bobcat, maybe a pretty area in there, you got, but lines boxing, so that's what I came up with, I did some research on it, we'll just reach out to Titan Soup or Yankton, just to get pricing, come over, what I was looking for, now obviously it comes with the tractor, or wherever you want to call that, that piece of it, it has a six-foot snow blower, which all the sidewalks out there are six feet, so that's I'll bid on that, and I figured that's gonna be very helpful in that parking lot, because it's got a lot of hitting the corners, if you will, and you gotta plow out instead of using bucket and back ragging out, plus you can use it for the sidewalks, there's significant amount of sidewalks out there to do, so I have a snow blower attachment on there, I have a snow blade attachment, figured that, I have a sand and soft spreader, figured for it also, and out porch support. And also, I have a price on the finish more, and there's a big asset on it. It's really hard, if you look at the blueprint, kinda see how things are gonna lay out out there, I thought that might be kind of beneficial, those large areas and those ponds, little shallow ponds and stuff from the grass, but mighty belches of, of on the property itself, I don't know, it's really hard to visualize how that's gonna lay out, and how it's gonna, and stuff, but anyway, so I don't know how much data you guys have there in front of you, on the pricing of it.
Does it come with the bucket?
It, I don't know if it came with, yeah, it comes with the bucket.
Okay.
Yep, comes with the bucket, we have a six-foot snow pusher here, so we have that in our, so. So all said and in, $96,000 and some change, 96,01, 96,011 dollars difference. So, and just so you know, that mower alone on there is $5,077. So, that's where we're at. You know, we wanna do a way to see them more, that's fine. You know? I could look at the print and try to picture in my mind a little bit more, which I think is really beneficial out there, and I thought it'd be beneficial to those ponds, because they're, they don't have water and they won't, we're supposed to be planting grass in there, so that will grass up and that.
Because they're tiled, so.
Yeah.
Is it okay for us to spec a Bobcat only and spec out right away every other brand?
I don't know what their, what their, what their county's policy is, I know.
I would say that we probably.
The former world I came from, you could.
Yeah.
I worked at the schools, but everybody's.
Is there really a comparable to a dual cat?
I don't know, maybe else has one out there, you know, there's VersiTrax, but you know, it's totally comparable, but they're way more expensive. Yeah, they're, I priced those up.
Yeah, this is a good price.
Yeah, I thought that was a excellent price.
Yeah.
Is this what the Timbersen, that we discussed with you?
Yeah, this gentleman, his name slips me out, but yeah, he asked me about that. Fine, I said, yeah.
Ben either.
No.
Brendan, Kevin.
Yeah. Honestly, Brian, I'm still interested.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking that we probably in the header, we have the Bobcat UW56 or Equidla.
Okay.
Yep.
When I, when I was bidding stuff for the state, you know, I
Yeah.
nearly averted a lawsuit.
Nearly or did?
Nearly. But it, you know, if you just put that in, I think would make a difference in how widely it circulated the, the request for, request for bids.
Okay. Get that verbiage in there.
Yeah.
Nicholas Webb.
Okay.
Right, so, we need a motion to approve the.
I'll move to approve the specs, second.
It's a motion and a second, and I assume that includes the Equidla language.
Yeah, they already put, not saying.
Adding, adding, need further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
One quick note, I green lighted the lining of the sewer lines, green lighted it, starts somewhere on the line, so, so you see it, travel large bill comes in. Well, all right, thank you for your time.
Great, thank you.
Good hearing, that's the election canvas, right, I pass around the materials that you do on, what we typically do for most of those, we have one person that will open our poll books, and they'll have the number of voters from the poll book, and that's where it looks like you have the recap sheets from the poll workers from election night here, and that'll have to pull it on the bottom.
Right.
Betty, I think you've got a results sheet there, Dave, you have the results from the tabulator, and then you have the campus certificate and the results that were reported to the state, so that comes right out of the state software, and we'll compare the totals from the poll books and the recap with the number that was put through the tabulator on election, and then compare the results as they're reported from the tabulator again, but safe software.
No, we don't have to wait till 9:30, but. Is that such a good thing?
I have 9:30, I suppose we could.
Yeah.
Time there, I was thinking of doing our own schedule, so.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, well, soon Carrie sent the quarterly report out previously. Um, so, I guess, must get any questions about it. I moved to group, thanks for the report, I appreciate how detailed all this is, thank you.
You've been busy.
On the state of South Dakota, which.
So there's a motion in the second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, I do have one more item, it's not on the agenda, but there's not really everything to decide anybody, um, you notice that there's still two trailers out in the parking lot, that is probably where they're gonna have to be, the generator is back out of the 4H building, because the trailers won't fit in with the garage, the opening is four inches too short.
Seriously?
Seriously, and Scott, even thinks if we take the next course of break out above the door, it's still gonna be short. So, for the generator, every, all the trailers? All trailers, that opening is only 91 and a half inches. So, the generator needed to be plugged in, so that's back out to the 4H building, and the command trailer, so the five trailers is gonna be out there until 5:00. They put tiny wheels on them or something? Kind of, kind of. There's no room for the one bike trailer? Really? So, for Rod, as I'm thinking. Well, maybe I, Rod's never wanted anything out there, because I don't have access to anything, so somebody would have to come, because I've thought about the lead building and all that previously too, and, yeah. Anyway, just a quick update on that, so, you also got Tony? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
Well, I'm sorry, we're a storage unit? We rent a storage unit in there? Label network, if we rented a storage unit? Yeah, I don't know, sort of one entitlements, I don't know, I don't know, I'm just, yeah, I don't, I spit all over here.
How long are the trailers?
One's a 12 and one's a 16.
So, we got a SUV over 30 foot, and is that?
Well, unless we hitch to back. Unless we bring it to. No, that would be the, that would be the box size, so.
The box.
Yeah.
We'd have probably a 40, 41 or two 20s.
Yeah.
I'll check.
Somebody get their container units going. Sorry.
I just sold two of those.
I've been looking for some.
Oh, really?
Yes.
That's what, that's what my son Zach said too, why don't you tell him about this first?
Yeah, I have also been looking for one, so. They're a lot cheaper now than they were four years ago. Oh, they are, and actually, you can buy a kit from now to make it into a trailer.
Really?
It's basically welding spindles on the backside and putting the hitch on the front.
Because they could be a trailer that come in, the city can't kick you out of town, because it's a trade, the city don't allow it out.
We're getting one for the park board, and the deal that we ended up going with is 3,500, but then you can fuse it upon delivery, so it, it arrives and then you can say, I don't like this, it's not good enough, and doesn't cost you anything, and they take it away, so.
What did they, 35, 40 or 20?
I believe it's 40.
Well, it's a good deal.
Yeah.
Where is it?
Uh, I don't know, but I can get that place.
Yeah, that'd be good. Company now, those garage doors inside of them, and those are the really good ones, those where you can get on it in the sides, so.
You should do the liquor license renewals.
I checked with Andy, and he said that they have not had any instance that would, you know, make them recommend that we do it for you.
You got the check, true?
Yeah.
Move to approve both of them, second. Wait for you to say discussion.
Discussion.
I noticed that, that through all the local endeavoring body, Lewis Superior was published, were these published?
We don't have to for rules.
Oh, okay, okay, that they have with their phone numbers up in there.
Yeah, we just have to have it on the agenda, and we don't have to, to do publishing and, you know, the official hearing and all that, for what you want.
Okay, yeah, I, I just wanna make sure that the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted, so that in their, you know.
And, and just to note, those, both of them are, for, but each has two licenses, for sale and for off sale, so there's actually.
Correct.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. About the Hopey Ray settlement, LOU, with Lewis and Clark, P D hotels.
Set, require a signature?
Yeah.
Yeah, I moved to authorize the chairperson to sign. Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And do. Oh, yeah, we, we're at 31.
Travis, if you wanna open up a poll book, we can.
I'm starting with number one. All right, I've got some top two.
I have everything organized in order for you all, you know that notes.
My stuff, where do I check this stuff?
My stuff, where do I check this stuff?
Yeah, when they start comparing my candidate totals from what you might have tabulated, I'm not sure.
Will this be an absentee one? Does that matter?
I don't think it matters as long as we get a total, total from both.
Okay. So it. It says a hundred and forty-two, I've got one crossed off here, it's a same value.
Okay. And, uh, according to this, we had a hundred and forty-two, uh, however, one was unvoted at end of day. Uh, and so the total that I have at the bottom is a hundred and forty-one. So we had a hundred and thirty-nine ballots received, monitored, three additional received during the day, a hundred and forty-two ballots received total. But one was unvoted at the end of the day, and so that leaves us with one.
We've got another rule word one. Oh.
I have some keys on that. I'm getting three hundred and four. That's, uh, matches what I have on my cap relation sheet.
We've got a rule two. Seven hundred and nine.
That matches what I have on, we've got. Institutions, sort of practicing that.
We've got two eighty.
Yep, that matches.
Three. There's seventy.
Yep, that matches.
I do have one underlined in here. In, on an orange marker.
Not sure why either.
Um, there, uh. So during the absentee or. Does this say on there? Um, the first one did.
But the first one you opened for this.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep, um, so there, there is one ballot spoiled and the not absentee, but. It's just under, it was crossed off, so.
There's other rule words, three.
Five thirty-nine. That, that matches.
Yep.
Central one. Two seventeen.
Matches. Did all of central one go absentee?
No.
No. I've got a hundred and fifty-six, oh, I see, I got you. Different column, that matches. Central two. Eighty-six. That matches. Twenty-five. That matches. Northeast. Thank you. That matches.
Fifty-five.
Yes. I don't have that whole, but I have a column, there's two twenty-four and a column that is one.
Yeah, yeah, there was, uh, one express vote voted in that word, so that would be your answer valid there.
Is that P is in there?
Uh, P is provisional, we did have a few provisional ballots, only one of them commented, and that will likely affect.
Yeah, cause the totals here has four eighteen, but the addition of those two is twenty-eighteen, so that explains the difference.
For these two. Eighty-seven. Yes. And one on five. Yes, that matches. So these one. Seventy-six, yes, that matches. So they crossed off three ninety-one and then three ninety.
They worked one earlier in the book where they had written a name, and I figured out that person needed to go to a different. Uh, they need, so they're carrying, you know, correcting those numbers at the end there.
So it's three ninety plus another, okay, that's just, so three ninety, okay, that matches. For these two.
That, southeast two, I kinda remember here, who has the provisional ballot probably shooting. I remember which one you I gave, but it might have been Dave. Um, when we start comparing actual votes, you'll wanna add that in to the tabulator. But that'll come in a minute, I'm getting ahead of myself here, I'm sorry.
We did one with already provisional ballot, red P next to it.
Yeah, that one did not count, that one was not one that was eligible.
And this should be three forty-six. Yep, that matches. Two seventy-six. That matches. West one. Three seventy-five. That matches. This one just says west one.
Yeah.
There's provisional here, but we're at three thirty-seven. Um. So. Three thirty-six plus one. I have three thirty-five plus one provisional ballot, but I. Uh, yeah, so my total.
I have a provisional.
Okay.
Well, my count.
So, the very first one is crossed off here. Okay.
That's a lot, so what do I learn from top?
Well, I've got a total of seven of the votes cast, so that's something giant.
For the two together? No.
So do we have three seventy-five and three seventy-seven?
Three seventy-five absentee, and then should be three thirty-six.
Three thirty-five.
But the provisional doesn't count.
Seven hundred.
I have three ballots spoiled. Three hundred sixty-one voted in today, sixty-four. So ballots voted three thirty-six. So. So ballots to be counted is three thirty-five, number of voters from poll book for the second ballot is three thirty-six.
So what number should I be using for the request?
Did the provisional count?
Provisional in line count.
Should be three thirty-five.
Three thirty-five?
Should be three thirty-five. Are you still on one, that's still gonna be seventeen?
I'm still on two.
Yeah, still on two?
Yeah, so three seventy-five, first three thirty-five.
I have a note, we're on northwest one, I have a note from the county board. Two ballots were picked out by the machine with no ballot stamp on them, and so on the resolution board pulled those from the counts. Cause they don't get counted, so it's not valid. A lot of the other stuff.
Okay, so there's.
That's correct.
Yep. Alright, good oversight, everybody. West two. Two over two. That matches. Two forty-two. That matches.
That, um, is, Betty, and they, and they, if you would go through the total for each race. Compared. That those, um, numbers on a tabulator are agreed with what I reported.
So should we go through just totals or, or by word?
Um, or, yeah. I'm trying to do them both, with my word. Now, southeast there will be, um, southeast two, you'll find that there are, I think there were three races that were voted on that. Division ballot that did, you know, so that's where I don't have to add those in. On. Florida State and, and Betty, um, and then they, her sheet was, uh, was printed after. The state software was updated with the provisional that was counted, the worst, the least bottom, yeah. Maybe up to telling she was that one provisional, so.
Yep.
So should, I just read off the, um, the vote, um, the total vote for each candidate. So, um, Harris logs, the total was two thousand nine hundred forty-three.
I have forty-four here.
And so, uh, maybe that's a little sound.
Yeah. Here, yeah, the first ones, yeah, about these two. And I don't need to make an annotation.
Here's, but here's the last one that was reported to the state.
Okay.
Alright, so, um, Oliver, uh, Chief Oliver, um, what did she lose?
Correct. Correct.
Um, Trump, two thousand five hundred seventy-four votes.
Correct.
R. A. King, ninety-seven votes.
Correct, yes.
Cheryl Johnson, two thousand eight hundred seventy-one votes.
Yes. Oh, I forgot to put that one, yeah, excuse me. That number again?
Uh, two thousand three hundred seventy-one votes.
Correct.
And Dusty Johnson, three thousand two hundred ninety votes.
Correct, yes.
Um, Public Utilities Commission, uh, Forrest Wilson, two thousand two hundred seventy-two votes.
Correct, yes.
Vivian Oaks, two hundred forty-one votes.
Correct, yes.
And Christine Bacon, uh, two thousand seven hundred forty-three votes.
Correct.
State Senator Sidney Davis, three thousand ninety-four votes.
Correct, yes.
The state senator of district eighteen, um. Sarah Carter, the ten votes.
Correct, yes.
Lauren Nelson, two hundred forty-four votes.
Correct, yes.
State representative, district seventeen. Uh, Ray Ray, two thousand seven hundred sixteen votes.
Yes.
Um, Shoreman, one thousand eight hundred thirty-seven votes.
Correct, yes.
And Cassel, two thousand seven hundred eighty-four votes.
Correct, yes.
State representative of district eighteen, um, Paul Perrins, eight more things.
Correct, yes.
Sarah Mettenberg, seven votes.
Yes.
Mike Stevens, two hundred fifteen votes.
Correct, yes.
And Julia Ock, two hundred thirty-five votes.
Yes.
County Commissioner at large.
All those guys.
Yeah, um, Pat Lanning in, two thousand three hundred votes.
Correct, yes.
Kevin O'Kelly, two thousand two hundred thirty-six votes.
Yes.
Kevin Brady, two thousand three hundred thirty-four votes.
Correct.
Uh, Glenn Gilbertson, two thousand three hundred thirty-three votes.
Correct.
Dino Wall Raven, one thousand nine hundred thirty-six votes.
Correct.
And Travis Moeller, two thousand seven hundred thirty-three votes.
Yes.
Supreme Court retention, um, yes, was three thousand sixteen hundred fifty votes.
Correct, yes.
And no was nine hundred eighty-two votes.
Correct, yes.
Um, constitutional amendment E. Um, yes, was three thousand forty-two votes.
Correct, yes.
And no was two thousand five hundred eighty-six votes.
Correct, yes.
Constitutional amendment F, yes, was two thousand seven hundred ninety votes.
Correct, yes.
And no was two thousand. Eight hundred sixty.
Correct.
Um, constitutional amendment G, yes, was thirty-two hundred votes.
Thirty-two oh one here, since we have the addition on here, okay?
Okay. And no was two thousand one hundred fifty-three votes.
Correct.
Constitutional amendment H. Yes, was two thousand three hundred fifty-one votes.
Correct, yes.
And no was three thousand three hundred forty-six.
Correct, yes.
Initiated measure twenty-eights. Yes, was one thousand nine hundred forty-nine votes.
Correct, yes.
And no was three thousand six hundred thirty-three votes.
Yes.
Initiated measure twenty-nine, yes, was three thousand three hundred five votes.
Until sent here, do you have change on this supplemental, okay?
And no was two thousand ten sixty-one.
Yes. Yes.
And referring law twenty one, yes, was two thousand five hundred twenty votes.
That, yes.
And no was two thousand eight hundred fifty two votes.
Yeah, yes.
Well, then we have the candidate certificate for each of you to sign on the counter on the second copy too, so that I can run one to the same.
Okay. I'll let someone fill in the date, I've already signed that one.
One more order of business in the candidates, so, I could put it out of the collection audit. You'll remember in June, we had to draw randomly without a computer, so I brought our Halloween candy bowl somewhere on this.
Ceremonial hand bowl, yes.
We need to audit five percent of the precincts, which for Lake County is just one, it has to be at least a hundred votes. And so I have no card here with all the races that were on the ballot. And I'm just gonna real quick write precincts on the backside of these, because I forgot, or no, I did bring my extra note cards here. So I will write those, make sure that we have all of them, somebody. Draw a precinct for me. So if you're here next to me, would you like to check and make sure we have all of our precincts? We should have eleven there. We should have, well, worth one, two, three. And then we should have.
Oh, I gotcha. Two, one, three, okay.
We should have central one and central two. And E one and E two, that's northeast. And then southeast one, southeast two, and then northwest one, northwest two. And we'll pull those in half, we'll draw our precincts. Nice, if you wanna shake it up and, uh, Dave, if you'd like to draw?
Pick a card, pick a card, any card. Then the winner is.
S one.
Southeast one, all right. And then.
It's mean of you to pick that one, Dan.
Um, Dave, I believe you have the results report, I just looked them down in the line, if you wanna just go and make sure that we have all of the races. Um, when we get to District eighteen, we're gonna pull those out because those are not part of the southeast portion.
So on S one, you want?
Yep.
Okay. And southeast wouldn't have District eighteen. That's right. We need to write the results, you know, these cards.
No, we're just gonna make sure that you have every race on a note card there.
Every race that applies.
Yeah.
Something's got better fingers for separating stuff. Roller.
Okay, the part of the full selection audit is that we have to audit at least one statewide race. So for this, we're going to want to pull out the ones that are not statewide races, so county commissioner. And District seventeen would not be a statewide race then.
Representative District seventeen would be out. Senator would be out. U C is in. First National U S Representative. All the amendments.
All right, those are all in, well, hold those out on the second envelope.
All this technology will kill them all in the bowl.
That's right.
Right.
Randomly without a computer.
How scary all this technology is. Old fashioned bowls, can't hack those, no. I went to a magician once.
Shake it up, here I want out.
Now, I'm gonna hand mix it again. Okay, go for it.
It's easy.
What's easy? Remember, Supreme Court justice. That's actually anything going, it should be a simple one. Okay, there you go.
Okay. And I'm gonna throw in those that we pulled out.
Okay.
District eighteen, right, so I am pulling out state representative, district eighteen and state senator. So you're not gonna draw. So shake them up and draw one out.
You're vertically again once, try to shake again. Okay, think central, think central. Referring law twenty one.
All right, yeah, good. That will be, if we do not have a recount, which it is possible for a commission raise. One of losing candidates has a petition for that, but we do not have a recount. Then we will be auditing southeast one or referring law twenty one and. So then I just need a motion to, um, finalize, so I can have those, uh, figures out canvas.
I'll move to separate canvas, I'll second.
There's a motion in the second, to the second canvas. Any discussion? During none, opposed, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
I think guys will be honest now, they, they sent those.
Yep.
Yeah, I gave them the carry.
Yep, Maloney was.
Six five.
Six seven seven was Maloney, Dakota real tea was two seventy five. Real tea in mine was three thirty five.
I think when they leave that, it's a chance, please, sometimes three forty five or something like that. We need to be under five hundred, twenty five hundred percent rotation.
Five hundred, that is true.
Yeah. All three of them, well, under that. And you missed, you missed most of the thought.
Yeah.
So that allows us to even go to other documents and so forth.
Yeah.
And since the interest, I guess, would be uncarded, but buddy, the hand is.
You know, like, but what is it, different? Yeah. Again, for the person who's.
That's the big toss around it.
He wrote on one of the sheets, I think.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't make any sense really to go to action in this case, I mean, I think it. I'll put it to anybody landowner.
Carl Libby.
And the next door to that was Village Match and Trust.
Oh, yeah. Libby's the one.
Libby's the one that's actually, it's on here.
Yeah.
Sort of in their fence.
Yeah.
Little bit of hesitation about if there is more than one abiding landowner choosing which one of them, we, like, without notifying.
Well, between, take a look at this, Jeffrey, it's not really anybody else abiding it.
Okay, I was thinking the house lot here, there's just, uh, you know, this, like, potentially the person that has the house.
Matt's a house too.
Is that all the same? If that makes it real easy, then I would just say, yeah.
Yeah, that trust, yeah.
I think that's. Yeah, so if it's all owned by the same people, then.
No, no, it's not owned by the same people.
Okay.
The house is Village Path and Trust. Well, they're not.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it makes sense to sell it to Libby because the trust. I really respect that.
Yeah.
That's, that's. Yeah, yeah. There's two living, just one, one, I, was it any, in the honor of that? Okay, when the hanging end, I mean, this one's.
Also, Matt's don't own that.
Okay, so.
Just that, you know, if there was a chunk of property on the back of my property, you know, and, you know, even if it goes on the other side of the fence line, but if it was like same lot lines on the side, like, extend my property farther back, like, I would, I would be interested in buying, ask for five hundred dollars. So I just, rather than picking winners and losers.
We can send a letter to each of them. Yeah, we do.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and I can read the statute here. Any, every surplus they get formally, okay? So if it is surplus and if it's the appraisal that we did, that Dave provided, uh, that twenty five hundred dollars or less. May be sold by the governing board in a private or public sale without notice. Or did we, we didn't, we didn't surplus those.
We didn't get.
We have, we're waiting for values. So do that next to then.
And I, I like, you have sent a letter to both.
Yeah.
And allowing them to.
So we do have surplus declaration on here, like, can we just surplus it today? Yeah, county owned property discussion and surplus declaration, so I moved to surplus this property, okay?
Motion in a second, uh, to surplus the property in discussion. During none, all votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So. So Michael, would you originate that letter or?
I certainly can, uh, I can originate a letter and I can have it prepared for, sign off with the commission, have a meeting that's. I can do that.
All right.
Let me just mail that certified and nicely, but they got it.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure I'm reading to the statute, if you have nothing to do formally with this document. Technically, it says after you do the surplus, then you have them do the valuation, but here we are, we now concede. So now I think it's just pursuant to the valuation, so long as the commission is comfortable that those three are all landowners of the political subdivision, uh, that have provided those, um, separate. Valuation, under twenty five hundred dollars and then just follow six thirteen forty, the actual surplus.
Anything on your board?
Well, the others, we have one more surplus property.
Oh.
The long, the long chestnuts.
Oh, yeah.
The city, they said they. They did if they were looking at the rainwater.
Sure they would.
I sent John the information in the last meeting.
We would still need to get evaluations, evaluations on that property as well. Even if it's transferred between government entities? I think so. Does that not just translate? There's nothing in here that's, there's nothing in here that, in these surplus statutes that would indicate that we could just transfer it to another government property. Cause that's what we did in the strip, that's in the strip. That's what I always think. Yeah? Well, we sold it though, in this surplus. So maybe if we sold it, it'll save me some third dollar.
See if they give us a buck for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I moved it, offer that to the city for sale for one dollar.
Are we? Exactly. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm probably the safer option, surplus, was, you know, the ten plus strip of land, there was consideration, the one dollar is a consideration, I mean.
Yeah.
It, it's marginal consideration, but the ten plus strip of land, you know, we had a lot going on in that sale, and so one of the things to consider in the sale was it. Makes people more confident.
If you feel that's more appropriate, then I'll send that motion.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just have to give copies of what it is, and I'll get some reevaluations. We, we need, need three again. And we need three again, and I would feel comfortable doing a motion to surplus it today, give the evaluation.
I'm on the surplus problem.
Sorry. There's a motion, I can just sort like the property on Chesnut's space. Um, any further discussion? During none, all votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
For those properties, work, well, Dan.
Which one, sorry, which one? I don't know. I can, I can look into it.
Good.
It's hard because pretty much everything around it is exempt as well, so it's not like a similar property has.
Yeah.
Sorry, I should come with the microphone.
It's tough to find comparable.
Yeah, and it's not billable anyway, so you can get some notes.
Yeah, what I was saying, I think, like, like, um, and all the other similar properties are, between the river and right away, are also exempt. So it's not like we have the, the assessed value, like, the one that we're on that has the, like, adjacent, um. Still trying to find a similar, as far as the sex goes, um, I would.
It's not billable.
No, we're not, anyway. There's a reason.
There is really no value.
There's a reason it became county about.
Right? Anything on your board? Building projects.
Moving forward.
Right, jurisdiction.
Uh, not really.
The other commissioner, the race. And so, uh, Sea Drive has actually done something really interesting, um, they have signed out to regional systems brands. And it's been paying for things like local market and seafalls, regional and distribution of the system. So just, just FYI, it's, it's a huge credit. Um, and, uh, you know, individual laws are receiving things. The, the global market got fifty thousand, distribution, that's just got a little.
So is the idea like developing new markets for local food?
Yeah, exactly. And it's a huge regional brand, um, so just, just.
Where's the best place to learn more about it?
Um.
On the Sea Drive page or?
Yeah, yeah, so, 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 so is. Anything else? Executive session, can I?
Yeah, I don't do an executive session.
Okay.
Yeah, can we talk about?
Yeah. Thanks, yeah, I also have a, a personal matter that we discuss.
So is there a motion to go into a technical session?
So moved.
Very.
Motion in the second, going to a session, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Make this very, motion to, uh, any.
Move to come up, executive session.
Okay.
It's a motion in the second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there any other business to come?
Yeah, just that one, surplus, six five one. Statue.
Nice.
You're looking for the statute, are you excited? It's six thirteen.
No, this, this, look, look under six five dash one, or six dash five dash one, instance.
Yeah, there it is, six five one. All counties. Change with each other, transferring, you know, the property one, it was.
That could be, that would be.
Yeah. So that allows us to do it, right? Yeah, well, we wouldn't have surplus it, I mean, that already we wouldn't have surplus problem, which we did, so we wanted to send that out. What even if it's surplus, we can still do it. Yeah, we would still be ownership, but it'd probably be easier to just. It'd probably be easier if we, if we didn't surplus it, and then we could just go through the process under six five one and transfer. So who made that motion?
I, I made the motion, and I think, I think I made it seconded, so, and I can still, within the same meeting, or send.
No, one second.
Back in the minutes.
Okay, so. We have a, uh, a motion to, uh, rescind, um, the surplus thing about property on Chesmond Street. Any discussion? During none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So maybe we can, uh, put this on the next agenda.
I'm trying to be, I'm pursuing these statutes, I agree. I noticed that Jose was on, back when we were doing, we were doing that, he's already aware. Yeah, but now we're rescinding.
Yeah, well, he doesn't know that part.
Right.
They did what? Yeah, but that would, we could.
Yes, correct.
Any further business?
Move to your.
Second.
It's a motion and a second, to, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.